Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marion City Council Combined Meeting Monday, November 4th, 2024. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as we're all.
Please show that we have Councilmember Cheney absent today. First on the agenda, we have Approval of the Minutes, Approval of the Minutes of the October 9th, 2024 Combined Meeting. Comments, questions, concerns by council? Motion in regards to that?
Wait a minute, I had a... On, um... The first page of the minutes. Somewhere down here. Under the City Manager's Report. That should be Jacob Day, or Jake, not Jack.
Okay. I'll fix that. Thank you.
That's it.
Sounds good. Looking for a motion with the revised comment in it?
I move to accept the minutes with the revision.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name. Kerry's. Next up, we have the Proclamation, Municipal Government Works. Whereas the city of Tawnytown was established in seventeen fifty-four, and whereas the city of Tawnytown is one of one hundred and fifty-seven municipalities incorporated in the state of Maryland, and whereas the Marion City Council recognizes and celebrates that municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the city of Tawnytown is proud to promote municipal government awareness, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, and play, and explore, and now therefore be proclaimed that the Marion City Council of the city of Tawnytown, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League and declare in November to be Maryland Government Works Month in Tawnytown. And that was the proclamation for Municipal Government Works. Next up, we have council members' statements regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council members like to make a statement today?
Nothing from me.
Hearing none, we are proceeding right along. We are going to public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. Please be aware, this will be the only time for public comment today, as there's no other place on the agenda for it. So if you have a public comment pertaining to agenda or non-agenda items, now is the time for that.
Why have we changed that?
It gets combined meaning, it's always at the top, if I remember correctly. For the combined meaning, right?
Yeah. If we, right, because if we wait until the normal time for, um, comments at the end, we won't be able to hear them before any voting takes place. So usually we have that.
Well, then how are they supposed to comment on things that are said on agenda items if they haven't heard the agenda items?
Just to check, this is how we've always done it, right? As far as I can remember, this is how we've...
Right, when we've had one meeting, because normally the agenda items are down, um, I guess before new business, or later in the agenda after we've done our, our action items. Actually, maybe I've got it the wrong way. Now I don't have a, you know, a typical agenda right in front of me.
Yeah, normally it's at the bottom, yes.
We always combine the two, combine the two agenda and non-agenda items, right? Early in the meeting, so people have a chance to speak before we vote on anything.
That's how it was in October as well for the combined meeting, if I recall correctly.
Because normally we have comments Wednesday, and then we vote on things Monday. This way, putting it early in the meeting gives an opportunity to hear things before you vote on anything.
Yeah, but it doesn't give the public an opportunity to hear what we're talking about, um, or an opportunity to comment on the things that we say. Maybe it was like that. I'm looking up last month's, uh, agenda right now. You are... Yeah, you are corrected, is the way it was done. Alright, must stay corrected. Guys don't recall it that way.
No, I think, yeah, I think that's how we've always done it, but... I mean, I understand your point as well.
Yeah, I, you know. Okay.
Any public comment pertaining to agenda or non-agenda items before I move forward? Hearing none, we're heading down to Resolution Ordinances and Agreements. Up for adoption, we have Resolution 2024-14 Water Allocation for November. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
I approve Resolution twenty-four fourteen.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name. Kerry's, up next, we have the City Manager Report. Jim?
I'm gonna be very quick with my usual report, uh, just run through a couple items here. Capital Equipment, we've accepted delivery of the street sweeper. It's already, um, been put in service. You may have seen it, um, on both the state roads and some of our local streets already. Most of the department's been trained on it, but we're, we're taking advantage of, you know, when somebody goes out, they take another crew member or another, um, individual who hasn't been trained yet, so we're hopefully gonna have everybody trained very quickly on the, on the street sweeper. Nothing new to report on Charter and Code updates, um, Robert Smolrode Broad Street, uh, the claim's been finalized. We just think, we do need to sign it before it goes out the door, though. Let's see, no update on, uh, the stormwater project. Uh, as far as, uh, the sewer rehabilitation program or project goes for this year, um, we've gotten, uh, easement for one property on West Baltimore Street is ready to go. Uh, the property owners indicated that they're, you know, onboard with everything, but we don't have their, they haven't put pen to paper yet. Uh, the other one, uh, the church property where we've decided to reroute the sewer line around the playground, uh, having some problems getting the, the deed information there, so the city attorney's gonna help us out with, um, having somebody do that deed research. The church wasn't able to provide a copy, um, and we weren't able to locate one of the land records. Let's see, the, uh, just a couple little housekeeping things. The audit was finalized and submitted on, uh, October 29th, so we met our deadline there. There's a lot going on in the world of planning and zoning, um, a lot of traffic studies have been, um, initiated for, uh, a couple substantial projects. Um, we have Mountain Brook Farm that's in the development process, but then we also have, uh, the Sewell property has expressed interest and shown sketch plans, but they haven't submitted anything formally, uh, but they're working on a traffic study. And also, the property close to the roundabout, um, that's commercial, close to the roundabout and residential towards Stumptown Road, has also expressed interest, and they're also, um, embarking on a traffic study. Uh, so, a lot going on in the planning and zoning world that's, uh, become a bit time-consuming. And the last thing I had, I just wanted to bring up holiday parking, uh, so we have a little more notice than we did last year. We passed a resolution in, I believe it was 2013, that, um, allowed for free weekend parking between Black Friday and New Year's. We may not have always done the greatest job of advertising that, um, so, you know, we can put signs on meters and so on, but last year, the suggestion was made to offer three-hour parking throughout the month of December, um, for that same time period. So just wanted to see if we wanna stick with the resolution and just, you know, hang signs on the meters to that effect, or if we do wanna do something for every day of the week. So, hoping to get some direction on that.
Why would we restrict it to three hours?
Um, that's what council discussed last year and what we ended up doing.
The difficulty is, if we don't restrict, um, parking at the metered spaces, then they get taken up by the, uh, renters who would normally park in the public lot. Um, that's, that's always been a concern, as far as I understand, it's the only reason we've ever kept the meters.
Right.
I think, uh, the only reason I say that is to... It's hard to monitor.
It is.
As you pointed out. And I think most of our neighboring jurisdictions are are in the habit of offering free parking during the holiday season. Again, being a resident and as a zoner on Main Street, York Street, and Baltimore Street, I never see an overwhelming demand for the parking places on the curb anyway. But I, I, I personally would just like to tell everybody there was free parking downtown during the holiday season, you know, if we wanna start at Black Friday and end at Christmas, that's fine. But I, I, I just think we're complicating things, and it not only does it complicate things for us, it complicates things for the, for the shoppers too, because the question is, well, am I in within, within that three-hour period? You know, that, that's always in their mind, or I better get back before the time runs out, and then I've only been here one hour and a half, but the time's gonna expire, and I better get back, so... I, I don't, I don't think that we're... I don't think we're well-served by putting a three-hour time limit. That's just my opinion. Rather, have a blanket.
My only concern is, is how do we, how do we prevent the, the local residents, uh, you know, from taking up all of the spaces? We've already, you know, we, we went through, um, a lot of, uh, grief and heartache with the, uh, you know, with the fellow that parked his van out in front of the store there at 27. You know, uh, and that was even without any kind of free parking. That was, that was just simply during the regular metered, you know, regular metered times, and we still had trouble getting that space, keeping that area, you know, clear during business hours. I mean, I, I I'm not sure what the answer is, because I agree that we do have a difficulty in trying to monitor the three-hour, um, requirement, however, uh, I can't say that I'm in favor of allowing free-for-all parking in the downtown area. Even, you know, even during Christmas. I think the signs on the meters that we did previously, or this past, last year, I think that that helped, um, and I'm in favor of that, but I don't think we should make it free all the time.
To my pro temp's point, again, that the problem comes with enforcement. I mean, there really is no way of enforcement for the three hours of non-metered parking.
Well, yeah, but at least if the stipulation is there, it'll keep the honest people honest.
Other side of council, you guys got it?
I guess, given that there's no way to enforce the three hours, I'd be more inclined to say, uh, free parking.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we're only talking about five weeks, four weeks, and I don't think it's gonna be... I don't think it's gonna be abused to the fact that we're gonna have cars lined up and down Main Street. If that, if that were true, I would welcome it, but we're not. I mean, it's just not gonna be.
Well, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just, you know, I don't wanna, don't wanna start a cavalcade of, of something that we can't, you know, open a bottle and get a genie out we can't put back in.
So, and certainly we can try something this year and see how it plays out, and if there's a problem, then we'll know for next year not to repeat it.
Chief Baker, do you have any comment on this?
I do not agree with the difficulty of enforcing. I'm aware that other cities have done free parking too, so it's not usual.
Alright.
So why don't we just try the free parking and see how it works?
We have to.
And next year, maybe we have to regroup.
You want a consensus on that, Jim?
Another thing...
Councilmember Fuller?
Nope, no opinion at all.
Okay, Councilmember Foster?
I've had this conversation a million times.
The free park.
Free parking, Council.
Free park.
Apparently on the short end of this, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make up, make up some signs.
In that regard, and maybe this'll come up later, but I think we need to, now that we're in the street sweeping business, make a special effort to keep downtown, I mean, look, like, let it look pristine during the Christmas season, trying to attack people downtown, not, you know, it's effing right now, so...
Sure. And before we get away from that, I do wanna mention, I've, I've heard from several people already, uh, about the difference and about, you know, seeing the city's street sweeper, and, and they seem to be doing a much better job, and they can, you know, time it better, and they, they've got, uh, I believe they had a guy work out with a, a leaf blower, blowing trash out of the streets and out of the curb line, so that the street sweeper could get it easily. And I've, I've heard very positive commentary back from more than one person on that.
DPW went a little above and beyond, um, last week with, uh, a leaf blower on the sidewalk, uh, you know, and, and of course, a lot of those leaves would end up in the gutter sooner or later.
Sooner or later.
So they just kind of helped them along, um, and figured it would just make it look a little bit nicer, so...
And in fall, that's, you know, it's certainly a good thing to do, and, you know, not to have to do it the rest of the seasons, but it certainly was helpful and well-received from people who noticed it, and people noticed it.
Yep, that's good to hear, so...
Okay, Jim, so yeah, free parking, let's try to get, uh, if we get any complaints on it, let's make, make sure we hear them.
Thank you for the direction.
Did you have anything else for City Manager Report?
Nope, that wraps it up.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council on that? Hearing none, moving forward. Department reports, Main Street recommendations, Mish?
I'm gonna let the City Manager kick it off.
Okay, so, just, uh, I'm sure a lot of the folks in the room here know about this, but, uh, just a kind of brief introduction about Main Street and, you know, where we are and how we proceeded with our recommendations, so... Main Street America approach has been successful, a successful method to revitalize the traditional, traditional walkable downtown core of special places across the country. It's a dynamic method that the National Main Street Center continues to update with best practices. Staff, that is me and Director Mishy, and I'll just say we, going forward, approached the task with the assumption that remaining Main Street Maryland community, and accredited by the Main Street America program, was in the best interest of the downtown constituents and stakeholders. We also proceeded with the assumption that Main Street Tawnytown, as an organization, would grow and flourish and potentially one day achieve standalone status as its own 501(c)(3) with diverse and robust funding sources. In light of that assumption, our recommendations are designed to prevent the city from being the limiting factor of a Main, of Main Street Tawnytown, especially in terms of programming and fundraising. We look to the annual letter of agreement that the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development has implemented to format recommendations to council on the future of Main Street and Tawnytown. We've exerted photograph, or paragraphs from the letter of agreement and provided one or more recommendations for each of those responsibilities for the city. Each recommendation comes with the reasoning behind it, and we're supported by examples from other Main Street programs, or from our staff's survey and conversations with Tawnytown's Main Street business owners. Additional information is provided to demonstrate that the recommendations aren't without some basis. Uh, today's PowerPoint, we'll share it with you after the meeting, and a report following more or less the same framework is gonna be out within the next several days. And that's gonna have a little bit more detail. DHCD has reviewed our report and offered comments, but we haven't had a chance to follow up with DHCD since then. Um, so we'll be doing that over the course of the next week or two. The survey results, um, will be shared, shared, um, in an appendix when the report comes out, and also notes about our research into other programs around the state will be shared with that report. The final component of most of the recommendations is one or several topics that council should consider and be ready to discuss at a future meeting. Um, not every recommendation warrants that kind of discussion. Some are very, um, administrative in nature. But the discussion points are designed to provide council with the opportunity to have some input on the topics that we're not really prepared to make a, a firm recommendation on, because we don't know what direction council sees for some of these things. In some ways, it's a little inconvenient, the timing, that, um, we're going through this Main Street process, while the Community Comprehensive Plan is also, um, underway, because we think that the, um, Comprehensive Plan survey results could help inform where we wanna go with the Main Street also. So the questions in the community survey don't deal explicitly with Main Street, but there are some that I think could provide some direction, um, and inform the process on shaping Main Street, um, our, our Main Street program. So ideally, all of our plans and activities should be in harmony with the Comprehensive Plan. And the main strength there is that everybody has an opportunity to provide feedback in the survey through the comp plan, and then also they have the public forum of the Planning Commission meeting, meetings, and then they also have the forum of the council meetings when the plan gets to the point where it's under consideration by Marion Council. So, all that said, um, it's unlikely that Main Street is gonna result in a small-area plan within the Comprehensive Plan. But we're hoping that council will proceed with the process in a way that takes advantage of the comp plan process, so hopefully we can kind of tie the two together as we refine, um, what the Main Street's gonna be. And I'm gonna stop and turn things over to Mish.
Thank you. Uh, so, jumping right in, um, you're gonna see these letter of agreement responsibilities, uh, that I'm gonna just sort of talk about a little bit and, uh, kind of refine for you, and then you'll see, um, the recommendations. So this first one from the letter of agreement deals with the local government and its role as DHCD's partner in operating a Main Street program. Uh, the first two recommendations are straightforward and directly responsive to the paragraph of the letter of agreement that pertains to all local governments. For the first recommendation, we believe that we should use an ordinance to be explicit in code about the relationship between Main Street Tawnytown and the city. Main Street, for now, will be a program of the city that's largely funded and directed by the city, but we're mindful that it's time-consuming, and there's some expense to modifying ordinances. Uh, so we recommend that the ordinance will contain minimal details, but include language that allows the council to, to work its will through resolution rather than from ordinances and updating the code. Regarding the second recommendation, when a local government decides to participate in the Main Street America and Main Street Maryland program, it commits to support the program financially. Uh, continued funding demonstrates the city and council's commitment to Main Street businesses and residents, and provides the council with an additional opportunity to influence investment in the downtown area. This responsibility from the letter of agreement talks about using the time-tested National Main Street approach. Staff's recommendations address the historic preservation component, the establishment of committees, and committee objectives. Uh, these two recommendations are straightforward, but unlike the previous, oh, hmm, the part where I said staff's recommendations address the historic preservation component, that shouldn't be there. So, this is, this letter of agreement paragraph does talk about the, um, the, the local commitment part. Uh, but they are straightforward recommendations. DHCD has told us that they're sending letters of agreement annually now, rather than occasionally like they did in the past. So in recommendation three, we suggest council should take a little bit of time each year to review the updated letter of agreement and ensure that DHCD hasn't added anything that councils are prepared to do. Uh, and council can also evaluate whether the Main Street Board's resources are adequate to meet DHCD's requirements. Uh, as with other agreements, staff will review and be prepared to make recommendations. Uh, recommendation four creates the expectation that both the mayor and the board chair will sign the letter of agreement. Uh, the city is one of two essential parties to the agreement, along with DHCD. Um, so the mayor's signature is the only one that's necessary, strictly speaking. Uh, but since we do envision a board and committees existing, we think that including them in the letter of agreement signing keeps the agreement and the relationship with DHCD high on the board's list of priorities. This is the responsibility from the letter of agreement that talks about using the time-tested National Main Street approach. Um, and our recommendations address the historic preservation component, the establishment of committees, and committee objectives. Uh, so recommendation five, uh, and this is where we start to get into the meat where, you know, there's, there's reasoning and evidence from our research and discussion points for you all. Uh, recommendation five is to enhance the historic preservation tools that we have in the city. Uh, the Main Street America program grew out of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and at its core, the program is about preserving historic places, uh, through successful economic development. Tawnytown has not previously gone all-in on historic preservation for a variety of reasons. Uh, but we do believe that historic preservation will maintain or restore that small-town feeling uh, that we hear residents talk about. Uh, it'll improve the visual appearance of downtown, and it'll promote tourism. Uh, in talking with other Main Streets, we found that they have a variety of tools that we don't have here. Uh, some of them, uh, through the municipal government, but others, uh, through the Main Street program. In Berlin, owners of property in the historic district have to apply for permission before the alteration, repair, or demolition of any structure, even down to changing the exterior color. Uh, their town code lists the considerations that the Historic District Commission should take into account, uh, while deciding whether to approve the application. In Middletown, uh, projects that preserve historic buildings in their downtown revitalization zone are eligible for a lot of financial incentives. Uh, that includes a reduction in water and sewer benefit fees, uh, deferred payment of those benefit fees, parking requirement waivers, and expedited consideration of their projects. Now, we don't have a parking requirement for, uh, downtown business district, uh, but that's a demonstration of those sorts of, um, incentives, uh, that can be provided to encourage, uh, the historic preservation. Uh, in Frostburg, their Historic District Commission reviews exterior alterations to properties in the Frostburg Historic District. Uh, Havertagh Grace has a Historic Preservation Commission similar to Berlin's, and the planning director there is not allowed to issue a permit unless the commission is given a certificate of appropriateness for a project in the historic district. When we surveyed and spoke to local businesses, we found that half of them ranked historic preservation as one, two, or three out of six. Uh, that number was certainly higher than I expected. Um, and council's gonna need to decide what tools are appropriate for us. Um, so, things that you can, you know, consider, uh, modifying our existing design standards, creating Historic Preservation Commission with either prescriptive or proscriptive authority, limiting the grants that we get from the state just to the Main Street area in order to focus on historic buildings, uh, adding a historic preservation component to scoring grant applications. Uh, and we could also, you could also, um, budget city money, uh, for renovation projects. Um, one of the sort of hang-ups that we run into with the money from DHCD is that, you know, the state will compel you to use, um, the same historic material. And that can sometimes be cost-prohibitive. Uh, but if we use our own money, we wouldn't, the, the applicants wouldn't necessarily have to follow those same standards. Recommendation number six, uh, is that we do use the traditional four points of Main Street America and Maryland's fifth point to create a Main Street Committees, uh, distinct from the board. Uh, each Main Street, including our own, faces a variety of challenges and has many opportunities. Uh, straying from the traditional four-points approach, we believe would leave some areas unserved or underserved. Uh, making productive use of the five committees, including the, the clean, safe, and green one, uh, will allow us to address the many different facets of Main Street and provide a greater opportunity for community member input. Uh, it also reduces the strain on any individual volunteer by not asking them to take on more than they can handle. Talking with other Main Streets, we found that they have a variety of different committee systems. Some of them just talk about my volunteers, and don't have this sort of explicit committee system. Uh, while Bel Air, for instance, does have a highly-developed committee system with a variety of town staff serving on different committees that are relevant to their departments. In Havertagh Grace, there are separate nonprofits to do each of the points, and while they already existed when Main Street was created there, they do fulfill the organization's needs, uh, as Main Street Committees. The biggest takeaway that we had from discussions about committees was that we have to find what's best here. This is gonna be one of the areas, um, that we, we don't have a lot of, uh, we don't, we don't have a map for what's gonna be best for us. Um, when we surveyed our Main Street businesses, we found that eighty-eight percent of owners are willing to participate on a Main Street Committee. Uh, there has been concern that we might not have a robust, uh, group of people, uh, waiting to be involved. Um, but the, the survey of businesses reassures me that that's not so. For council to, to discuss and shape the process, I know that last month, we told you that DHCD relayed to us that eighty percent of the framework should be in place, um, before you sort of let this out of your hands and, you know... this out of your hands and, you know, turn the, wind the dial and let it run. So we ask that you consider the focus of each committee. When you get the hard copy report, there'll be an appendix that has the purpose of each committee that's described in the Main Street America handbooks. We're interested on guidance, how committee members should be recruited, and how committee chairs should be selected. And lastly, you might know that a Certified Sustainable Maryland Program exists, completely separately from the idea of Main Street. Some other places did tell us that their Certified Sustainable Green Team acts as the Clean, Safe, and Green Committee. And so we would absolutely be interested in hearing your willingness to participate in that program to address one of the needs of Main Street. Recommendation seven is to further ensure the committees understand their responsibilities and stay in their lane, to use a modern phrase. Without operating rules, committee responsibilities aren't clearly acknowledged. And in keeping with recommendation six's council discussion point to define the focus of each committee, we believe council should enumerate the responsibilities of the committees. Berlin and Bel Air use committees that are closely aligned to the five points and four points respectively. In Sykesville, instead of an organization committee, they have a Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. They call it the Jedi Committee. It seems like they all use a mix of board members and non-board members as committee members and chairs, and we expect that we'll rely heavily on guidance from the Main Street America material to guide us. We ask that council consider what the long-term and short-term objectives are of having these committees operating, and then what sort of responsibility each committee should have to achieve the objectives. And again, we'll ask you to keep in mind that 80% of the framework should be complete on this before we, we constitute the committees with volunteers. This responsibility from the letter of agreement talks about the geographic area that needs special attention from state and local government, and it again lifts the historic preservation aspect of the program. It talks about community identi, sorry, talks about community identity and building preservation, and those are two of the ways that this project touches on the comprehensive plan community Our recommendation number eight is to correct what staff view as two missteps when Main Street designation was originally made. We're going to ask you to endorse expanding it in one area and reining in the boundary in another one. A&W Country Meats and Mason Dixon Napa Auto Parts are literally on the wrong side of the street where the boundary occurs. We believe they should be brought into the fold, so we're going to ask you to approve including Westview Drive from Riffles Lane to the railroad tracks. And that will include these two longtime locally-owned businesses and give them the benefits, an extra, extra support that Main Street gives, and it will also hopefully result in Main Street getting support from them. And this adjustment request would put the Tonnytown Post Office Building in the Main Street boundary, which would hopefully give some options and flexibility if that property is ever not the post office. The expansion includes no or few residences, and on West Baltimore Street, the boundary extends almost to Park Road and slices through the properties at 129 and 127 West Baltimore Street. The only business west of Church Street is Dean's Automotive, and that's not the sort of business that's typically considered a Main Street business. We also probably wouldn't describe the area around Park Road as part of the historic walkable core of Tonnytown. Most of the buildings down there are residential, and more importantly, they're zoned residential, so there isn't likely to be any economic development activity happening there that would stimulate historic preservation. Reeling in the boundary would also remove private residences whose occupants could be impacted if council does decide on stronger historic preservation tools. Recommendation nine is to evaluate ways that we can improve pedestrian experience on Main Street, thereby generating a series of benefits that help us reach the overarching goal of historic preservation through economic success. Walkability has always been a key feature of historic downtown commercial districts, and substantial research has been done on actions that encourage consumers to walk, while Main Street Tonnytown can be easily walked, even all the way down to Park Road. Adopting some of these tactics could reduce complaints about parking, encourage spillover shopping and dining from people who are coming from a single destination, and create the image of Main Street as a place people spend time. Many of the Main Street programs we researched employ pedestrian-oriented strategies. We know that benches give patrons a place to sit and rest that doesn't require them spending money like a restaurant might. Havertagh Grace is notable for having benches at convenient, although not necessarily consistent intervals throughout their commercial area. We know that increased shade makes people more likely to spend time on the sidewalk by cooling the concrete and asphalt surfaces. Four of the Main Streets we looked at have Tree City USA designations, and we know that public art installations, whether they're murals, or sculptures, or painted utility boxes, encourage people to walk around and engage with the art on foot instead of in a car. Five of the communities we looked at have an Arts and Entertainment District designation. We're asking council to consider these ideas, more benches, more shade, and public art institute, installations, to improve the pedestrian scale and orientation of Main Street. We also ask you to consider sidewalk cleanliness as a component of improving the pedestrian experience. I know we just heard from the manager that Public Works went down and swept the sidewalks clear as part of the street sweeping, but there have at times been, I walk down the street and have to continually pause to pick up rubbish. It is not necessary for us to pursue a Tree City USA or an Arts and Entertainment District designation in order to take advantage of the benefits that those types of projects impart. So we're certainly not trying to overwhelm staff or just rack up sort of awards or accolades for the sake of it. We're definitely focused here on actionable things that will improve the downtown area. Recommendation ten is to establish a local community identity that we can articulate and use as a North Star while planning Main Street projects and historic preservation activities. I assume all of us, I know I do, so you must, hear comments in person and online that people move to Tonnytown for a certain feel, or they miss the way town used to be in the past 20, 30, 40, or more years, but we rarely hear that defined. DHCD calls it local community identity, and the comprehensive plan's community survey is an excellent way to identify what those words mean. For instance, if residents say they choose to live here based on safety, low crime, and attractiveness and character of the area, and because it's community services, Main Street can focus on safety-adjacent and design issues and on attracting resident-focused services. On the other hand, if they say they came here because it's a good place to raise a family, it's near their own family and friends, and they like the quality of schools, Main Street can focus on child and family-friendly events and accommodations, such as paying to install child-changing tables in every business, just for an example. If people rank employment opportunities, recreational opportunities, and natural resources protection highly for quality of life, then Main Street can focus on identifying potential pocket parks, pocket parks, marking distances on the sidewalk, like Ocean City does on the boardwalk to encourage recreational walking, and we promote downtown fitness, the gym, to draw people to the area. In this way, the timing of the comprehensive plan process is useful, helpful. Councils asked to determine to what extent local community identity is dictated by or related to downtown, and if the preferences of one group of respondents should be prioritized over the preferences of another group of respondents. And group can mean, you know, resident versus business owner, but it also extends to where in the city respondents live. The community survey asks whether you live in Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, and so, you know, should the response from means crossing carry extra weight because we really want them to come downtown? Should it carry less weight because we think that they're mostly commuters? Things like that are for council, sort of to provide direction on here. This responsibility from the letter of agreement focuses on who is on the board and the role of the board in advocating for small businesses and solopreneurs. Traditional economic development practice focuses on drawing large job creators who increase the non-residential tax base. The value of land on Main Street isn't likely to change by much, and the largest Main Street employers pale compared to the smallest manufacturers. So it's felt that the Main Street Board should advocate for those smaller folks. Recommendation number 11 is a companion to and expands on recommendation number one about codifying the program by ordinance and adjusting key parts by resolution. In general, people like to support successful programs where there's a minimum of structural work to be done. As a result of this, we anticipate the initial Main Street Board will be composed of a small group of people who have energy and resources to commit to the program. We expect that the board will grow as the program grows in success, reputation, and capacity. This recommendation is a companion to recommendation one, which wants to provide council and Main Street with flexibility by including important details in the ordinance but allowing for adjustments. Successful Main Streets that we spoke with have a widely-ranging number of board members. Government-run Thurmont Main Street has four, while separately-administered Sykesville has 12. Council should define who are the stakeholders of the Main Street District and what makes someone a community member whose input on Main Street would be productive. Council should also consider what the needs are of our downtown that need to be served by Main Street, and how board members can highlight and address those needs. Finally, council should examine the role and visions for Main Street to advocate to council, to other government organizations, and to the general public. We're at the halfway point. Recommendation 12 is a companion to and expands our recommendation two about funding the program. Staff believes that city control is a vital part of standing up the Main Street program again. City control necessitates city funding, since it's relatively rare for individual or corporate philanthropists to fund government projects. City funding should be tied to council's priorities for Main Street and should continue for as long as Main Street performs satisfactorily. This should transition over time as the program becomes able to achieve the one-third, one-third, one-third model that DHCD recommends, which is one-third government support, one-third from foundations or individuals, and one-third from... I have to go back and look. The one-third, one-third, one-third. What's that?
Fundraising?
That's not the word they use, but yeah, fundraising. In programs we looked at, funding was closely correlated to government control. The more control the local government exerts over the program, the more the local government pays the program's expenses. The business survey, survey showed that our businesses do expect investment in the Main Street program. Half of them say that Main Street's number-one activity should be group marketing of our downtown and businesses, and 20% listed Main Street, Main Street events as their top preference. Obviously, both of, both of those activities cost money beyond just staff time. Council should decide what level of activity it expects from Main Street and evaluate whether the current funding model is sufficient to support that level of activity. Additionally, council may want to consider benchmarks or milestones that would cause the city to contribute more, and examine whether there's an activity minimum that would cause the city to withdraw financial support altogether, effectively surrendering the Main Street designation back to DHCD. Recommendation number 13 asks council to explore new designated, newly-designated revenue sources, oh, I see, new designated revenue sources for the Main Street program, specifically from the county hotel tax and potentially from short-term rentals. To the best of staff's knowledge, there are five hotels in Carroll County that generate hotel tax revenue, and Antrim 1844 is one of them. Currently, the financial benefit to the city that derives from this county income is limited to participation in the Carroll County Downtown's program, which receives up to $10,000 annually through the county office of tourism. Linking Antrim 1844 guests to Main Street businesses has long been a goal, and it's possible that hotel tax revenue could assist with this goal. Additionally, no reliable numbers exist to tell us how many short-term rentals, like Airbnb or Verbo listed properties, are operating in Tonnytown. These accommodations are an additional potential source of program revenue, since the properties will draw additional guests if the Main Street District is more of a draw. In other places we talked to, Frostburg receives 12% of its FY23 funding from a hotel tax. Main Street Thurmont gets a portion of the Frederick County Hotel Tax on the condition that the money be spent on tourism marketing to audiences outside of a certain radius from Thurmont. In Bel Air, Main Street applies to the Hartford County Tourism Plots for funding for specific events that can demonstrate tourists are coming and spending the night in hotels. Staff doesn't have information about whether or how other programs make use of short-term rental income. Since these funding sources are based on tourism, council should discuss the extent to which Main Street does or should focus on tourism, potential ways to support a tourism focus, such as developing a compelling historical narrative or advertising and travel-oriented outlets, whether diverting the hotel tax from the county office of tourism to Main Street would benefit Antrim 1844 as our only tax-paying property, and if there are costs to short-term rental income that would outweigh the benefits to Main Street. Recommendation 14 asks council to explore what kind of fundraising they would like or dislike from Main Street. DHCD advises Main Street programs having a diversified source of income. More importantly, we want to provide Main Street with the room to go, and that means independent sources of income. At the same time, Main Street Tonnytown is always affiliated with the city, and there are fundraising ideas that could present a philosophical or communications challenge to the city. Council should decide on broad parameters of what kind of fundraising is appropriate for Main Street and what kind should be avoided. For instance, selling event sponsorships or memberships in a Friends of group could be allowed, and selling coupon books that provide the purchaser with benefits in each store while Main Street keeps the book sales income could be something permitted. On the other hand, fundraisers that compete with brick-and-mortar businesses or that capitalize on public servants, like a firefighter's calendar, for instance, could be prohibited. You'll recall that in recommendation 12, municipal control is directly and positively correlated with municipal funding. In this case, independence is directly and positively correlated with fundraising. Sykesville has a fundraising event that they sell tickets to, and they sell a coloring book whose pages are all made from photographs of downtown, and they solicit sponsorships from area businesses. Frostburg has two separate classes of investors, ranging in costs from $1,000 for a business to be a platinum investor, down to $30 for an individual to be an artist investor. These come with benefits such as inclusion on printed materials and kiosk maps, listing on their website directory, featured posts on their social media, and so on. Brunswick, which is an organization with a greater degree of government control, does accept financial donations from current sponsors, but it's not a substantial part of their overall revenue. Council should establish parameters for fundraising so the city isn't embarrassed, Main Street doesn't overspend on fundraising costs to the detriment of its finances, and whether different kinds of participation should be limited to Main Street businesses or not. This responsibility from the letter of agreement requiring a full-time Main Street manager for a municipality of our size represents the largest gap between DHCD and the city. Recommendation 15 calls to continue for now as we have been for many years, fund a position that is both Main Street manager and economic development director for the city. The letter of agreement requires a full-time manager for municipalities with a population greater than 5,000 people, as Tonnytown has. Staff are mindful of the recent additions to staffing at the Tonnytown Police Department and Department of Public Works and the current workload of other departments. We do not believe that the Economic Development Department, including the Main Street program, is the best place for additional investment in a municipal workforce while other departments remain understaffed. The annual funding from the state of, I'm sorry, the annual funding from the state for Main Street is currently $25,000, which is less than a budgeted and benefited city position would cost. We think it unlikely that combining the full DHCD allocation of $25,000 with current city allocation to Main Street of $12,000 would meet DHCD's standards of commensurate with public-oriented professionals in the area. Additionally, redirecting that money would mean the city falls short on other responsibilities to fund Main Street. Although DHCD has stressed to us that we should compare ourselves to the letter of agreement rather than to other programs, we did discover that in Berlin and Thurmont, the Main Street manager is also the economic development director. Council discussions points for this recommendation and recommendation 16 are consolidated under recommendation 16. Recommendation 16 seeks to provide an achievable framework that will lead to a full-time Main Street manager in the foreseeable future. DHCD has shared their commitment to helping existing programs achieve success as the programs work towards strict compliance with the letter of agreement terms. We believe that a suitable three-year plan to create a full-time Main Street manager position will address DHCD's concerns around this requirement. Part of the timetable should include milestones that demonstrate the financial stability to direct funding toward payroll from programming and a sufficient workload to occupy a full-time employee. Council should consider milestones, including a progressive list of tasks and activities they expect from a Main Street manager, a full-time Main Street manager. The revenue situation Main Street should be in so the program doesn't become re-dependent on city funding due to hiring a full-time manager, and whether the council would prefer the Main Street manager to be a city employee, or council would like to spin Main Street off into a substantially independent organization with its own employee or employees. As the discussion evolves, staff will be able to share the activities of full-time employees in places like Bel Air, Frostburg, and Sykesville, who all have more than one staffer dedicated solely to Main Street. This responsibility- This responsibility, from the letter of agreement, speaks to selecting an overriding theme or strategy for the program that guides the preparation of annual work plans and how to use those work plans to achieve long-term success. Recommendation 17 seeks to identify a transformation strategy for Main Street as a whole. These so-called strategies, which are supplied by Main Street America, are what could be described as the big reality of the downtown that should be taken advantage of. Oh, look, I said over here. The Main Street approach includes more than just the four points. The purpose of a transformation strategy is to identify what a community's outstanding asset is and to use that as the underlying thread through annual projects or programs. For instance, if we were in College Park and our transformation strategy was college town, we would focus on services that college students need and goods that alumni were likely to buy when they came to town for a football game. Some of the programs we investigated were very strong in this aspect. Thurmont is nestled at the foot of the Katocton Mountains and sees many outdoors folks come through. Their transformation strategy can be described as bikers and hikers, which is their reality, even though it's not listed as one of the transformation strategies. Frostburg is home to Frostburg State University, so they're college town. Havertagh Grace has a tremendous amount of family-friendly tourism based on the Susquehanna River emptying into the Chesapeake Bay there. While the population of Havertagh Grace is only about 15,000, they get many times that in tourism. The flip side to family-friendly is that they don't encourage small businesses that are oriented towards workers and residents. Council should decide whether they want to select a transformation strategy based on their knowledge, feedback from constituents, and how Main Street fits into the larger economic development picture, or whether to engage in a stakeholder process and who those stakeholders might be. Council should also consider how to balance competing preferences in order to select one overarching theme. Recommendation Number 18 delves into the nitty-gritty of committee work, asking Council to require use of standardized work plans to achieve clear goals in a method that is sanctioned by D H C D. Local government and services work best when there is a planning document in place to support daily, monthly, and annual operations. The city has a comprehensive plan, a stormwater management plan, and a capital improvement projects plan. These allow for long-range planning, consistency from one occasion to the next, and responsible budgeting. It's only suitable that the Main Street program be equipped with the same planning resources. D H C D helpfully provides communities with a work plan template, and if it's found that the template is insufficient or overly complicated for Tawney Town's purposes, it can be amended. Council may decide how intimately or distantly it wants to be involved in the work plan process in order to balance the grassroots nature of the program with the need to ensure progress that was missing in the most recent Main Street organization. Council should decide the extent of its involvement... Oh, yep. Council should decide the extent of its involvement in the work plan process, whether a grassroots planning system creates too many opportunities for failure, if they want to provide annual guidance or goals before the work plans are created, and if they would like to review work plans before the new Main Street year begins. This responsibility, from the letter of agreement, aims to ensure local programs are meeting performance standards by having us evaluated by the national staff. Recommendation 19 provides a method to strengthen the framework of Main Street Tawney Town. Main Street America's new, as of 2023, annual accreditation process is designed to ensure adherence to the replicable standards that are proven effective for Main Street revitalization and historic preservation through economic development. Reviewing these standards and the assessment that Main Street America uses will allow Council and Staff to establish an operating framework that ensures both accreditation and program success. Council should consider whether their priorities and those of the national accreditation model differ in any aspects and how to balance those competing interests. This responsibility, from the letter of agreement, expresses the belief of both D H C D and the National Main Street Center that ongoing education in emerging methods is vital to the success of Main Street programs. Recommendation 20 is a housekeeping matter to ensure compliance with national and D H C D training requirements. Ensuring adherence to this D H C D policy is most easily achieved by specifically designating funding to do it during the annual appropriation process. Council should consider how often they want the Main Street manager to attend the national conference, whether they would like to fund or subsidize conference attendance by Main Street Board members or committee volunteers. This final responsibility, from the letter of agreement, ensures Main Street communities are properly reporting relevant data to D H C D for purposes of the state's own reporting and for keeping accurate records. Recommendation 21 is a straightforward way Council can ensure Main Street is meeting its obligations to D H C D, as well as collecting information for Council itself and constituents. As the manager noted, later this week, you will get this information in a report form that will also include sort of a summary sheet of Council discussion points, what we're looking for from you folks. So anything you would like to add?
At this point, we'll see if anybody has comments at this right now, but we anticipate continuing the conversation in the coming months.
Questions, comments, concerns by Council?
I know, it's a lot to digest.
Yeah, it's a lot to digest. I certainly have a lot of commentary here, but I'd like to be able to relate it back to the individual slides and points. So, I'm, you know, Jay, I want to thank you for your work on this. It's very thorough, and you raise a lot of issues that were clearly issues during the last furtive attempts at Main Street, and you touch on some of the things that clearly went wrong there that we need to fix this time around. I think that we have the bones here to do something good, but we just need to make sure that we are applying it in a direction that is best for the businesses. You know, my concern is that if we continue to be very top-heavy as a city-directed organization, that we won't get the result we're looking for. One of the issues that we have in this city is that there is some embedded... I hate, I don't want to use the word distrust, but that's about the only word I can come up with right now, among some of the members of the business community and many of the property owners, especially some of the major property owners here in town. And there's also an awful lot of wait-and-see out there. So, it's going to be a matter of trying to get all of those players back involved and for them to see that this is something that they can help direct and something that will work to their benefit and not just another way for the city to put a thumb down on them.
Any additional comments?
Now, like I said, it's way too much to try to talk about here. We would be here all...
This is more of a digest.
Yeah. You know, I wanted to, I just wanted to say, I do want to say thank you, and I think that there are things that will come out of this that will be good, and I hope that we take this in the right direction.
Staff put a lot of good time into it, it came out really well. Again, my ask would be to hopefully everybody digest this, we come back in December, get specific questions, everything like that.
Can this PowerPoint be made available to the public on the website by any chance? Or is it Tawney Town Connect?
To refer to the manager about things posting.
I think we can do that.
But it's public record at this point, so it would be, if anybody wanted it, they could ask for it, but I'd, you know, be proactive about putting it out there.
We'll work with IT.
I agree on that, because I'd also like to share it out, try to get community responses and what they're looking for out of some of this.
Sure. I think one of the, one question I will kind of toss out there at this point in time, though, is, you know, one of the things that we have to think about is the fact that there are only two dozen or so storefronts and active business locations in the downtown area. It expands a little bit. I do like the idea of moving the boundary. You know, I think that there's some discussion to how, I wouldn't want to move it all the way into Church Street, and I have a reason for that, and we can talk about that later. But I think that moving the boundary out to catch A and W Country Meets and the post office and NAPA, I think, is an excellent idea. So, you know, I hope that we do that, we can expand the base of people that we have to work from that way, and people, you know, I think it'll, it will serve everyone all around.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I do want to give credit where credit is due, expanding the boundary to incorporate A and W Country Meets and NAPA is something that you, Councilman, proposed to me very early in my time here when you were on the Chamber of Commerce. So I certainly don't want to take credit for...
Thank you. I wasn't fishing for that, but thank you.
How many, were you guys able to up the respondents at all? Or are we still sitting at, was it?
We have been at 10. We have 12. But truthfully, if we're not presenting the report to you until a little later this week, I don't object to more people replying.
Again, I'd just like to make sure we're getting as many people as possible.
Have we reached out to the ones who did not respond? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
A lot of information in that report. I'm something we just, I'm a little overwhelmed. I mean, as you were going through it, I said, yeah, that's a good idea, then I'd say, well, I don't like that idea. And there's a lot of that to talk about. And if we're going to do this job right, we need to set aside a time to do that, whether it's a special retreat or whatever it is, to focus on Main Street and get some direction. The idea of additional businesses on Main Street, I think, should be at the top of that list. You mentioned a couple dozen storefronts. That's an issue. I think to have a successful Main Street, you've got to have most of your storefronts full, and that should be a priority before we do, really, anything else. That should be included in how we get more storefronts. That should be 1A, maybe, on the five-point list. But I would be very eager to explore what you've developed here, flesh it out and see what direction we go. I particularly, I was particularly interested in the historic aspect that the towns held. It's pretty uniform, that they were pretty focused on the historic aspect of their downtowns. And the other thing that impressed me that was that 88% of the people in the front of the survey said they'd be willing to help. So regardless of who was involved before, there's plenty more out there that can help if they don't want to. So we invite everybody that has a stake in the downtown community to become involved in it, but I don't want sour grapes or things that have happened in the past to thwart the efforts that you've done. It's taken a long time to come, to bring all this together, and we've got some good foundations laid we ought to build on.
Just to check, we don't have all too many storefronts that are actually just not occupied, correct? I know we have some that are occupied, that are still working on it, but not many that are actually non-occupied.
I think by my count, there are three or four that are unleased and untenable because they're either under construction or vacant. There are five, I believe, that are leased but not being currently used for commercial activity, and a couple that are being used for commercial activity but are probably being not their highest best use. And that was just from my, that's my view of the properties and your reviewing that stuff.
Yeah, that's all I had. Did you have any feedback on that again? It was, do you have any numbers on that? I know...
Not off the top of my head. I can, I mean, in the departmental report, I list throughout the town what's available for rent. I wouldn't describe, for instance, the property where Ava's Country Store used to be as available for rent, because last time I peeked in, it looked like it was framed, but there wasn't, so I wouldn't list that. And I would happily, if the property owner said, you know, hey, list this, and we'll build it out. So I don't believe that there is anything on Main Street that, like the Councilman said, that is unleased but immediately usable.
What about, what are your thoughts, Jim, on a retreat of some sort to really hash this out?
Certainly open to the idea. Of course, any, you know, any retreat does need to be open to the public if we're talking about...
Is there something where we can actually focus and try to wrap this up?
Something to think about, I, you know, I know there's been some mixed feelings about holding retreats and effectiveness of...
It's kind of hard to hold a retreat when you're having to do it in front of the camera, you know, but certainly a...
But a dedicated meeting certainly would be...
Certainly, you know, a series of...
I mean, that's my thing, it's just a dedicated meeting.
Yeah. In the way that the Planning Commission is doing with the comprehensive plan. You know, I think one of the failings that we had was that we didn't, we never really had a plan for how to move forward with the Main Street Board before, and I think that that, quite frankly, was the cause of much of the friction. So I think that that's something that we can fix going forward. And I, while I would like to see it folded into the comprehensive plan, I think that the downtown should have its own, its own plan, because obviously some of the interests of the downtown merchants are different from merchants in general in the city, and sometimes even competing, you know.
Can you just aim to try to set up some kind of dedicated meeting for this at some point? Doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point in the near future.
Yep. I would imagine that maybe with the holidays coming up, it might be a little bit of a challenge.
It's a little rough right now. It's not thinking my schedule in.
I think we might want to push this out to the new year.
Well, let's get ready for some discussion, at least in December workshop.
Yeah.
And maybe talk about how we want to move that forward, whether that can be, could we move that forward as a subcommittee and take a couple of members of Council so that it wouldn't constitute a quorum and kind of create a subcommittee around it.
Maybe that's the discussion for December.
Maybe that would be the discussion every December, and I'd like that, thank you.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by Council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Thank you for a very thorough report.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying so.
But before we move off of department reports, I just wanted to call out, Public Works contacted me and wanted me to remind everyone that we are collecting leaves, it's that time of year, but unlike in recent years, leaves will have to be in the craft paper bags. In some years, we've had local farms that would accept the leaves for compost, and we could put them in plastic bags, but we don't have that option this year, so the leaves do have to be in the craft paper bags. But the city is doing leaf pickup.
Additional comments, questions, concerns?
Are they on a list on the website when that is, or is it in conjunction with trash or what?
It's on Tuesday mornings, so, but we'll put a blast out.
Okay.
We'll publicize it. Same day as yard waste.
Christian Ford, legal report. Good evening. There's not much to tell you. The city manager already talked about, this month has been mundane, is about getting easements, easements from Flowserve, timing of easements versus when improvements have to be done, trying to track down the ancient easements on the church for the sewer project. So that's not very glamorous, but that's where we are to try to make some of these projects move forward.
Sounds good. Questions, comments, concerns by Council?
New Business Monthly Financial Report. Questions, comments, concerns by Council? Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the monthly financial report.
I'll second it. I'll second that.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name carries. Next up, we have accounts payables. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
Move to approve the accounts payable.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Further comments, questions, concerns by Council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name carries. Up next, we have approval of special permit, special event permit, National Capital Region Early Ford V8 Club Car Show, May 18th, 2025. Questions, comments, concerns regarding that?
Make a recommendation, will you approve that permit?
Looking for a...
I could go to it myself, except it's...
a vengeful church, so I can't go.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name. Kerry's, next up, we have the sheet stormwater management agreement. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to that?
Is this just to release the retained, right, finally?
This is actually, it's taken us this long to get the property owners and sheets to get the property owners to sign the stormwater management maintenance agreement that gives us the ability to go in and inspect and make repairs if the owners don't make repairs. So we've been chasing sheets for this for years.
Sign it.
Looking for a motion in regards to this?
I move, we sign it.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm looking for, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Kerry's, up next, we have request for approval of city office roof and exterior repair proposal. Any questions, comments, concerns by council?
And I'll jump in, we do have a representative from Gordian available virtually here, so he'll probably be turning on his camera in a second. But he's available to answer any questions about the structure of the proposal or specifics.
Mayor Proté, did you want to start?
I was overwhelmed by the increased cost in this project. I don't understand how we can spend a quarter of a million dollars on this roof, I just don't understand how that can happen. And I read all your stuff, and I still don't understand it, I mean, I see that it's been justified, but it just seems like I don't see many, much specific in there other than the fact that it may be this, or we might find that, or it could be this. And it's, you know, it just boggles my mind that that the cost of this project went from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know where to pick at it, other than the fact that have we got more than one estimate on this, or is this all we got?
So this is the only current proposal that we have, we have sought pricing in previous years for the roof work itself. And the prices here are pretty well aligned with the and I don't want to use the term quotes, but with the estimates that we've had from previous years. The scope of the project obviously has grown substantially to include window sills, fascia, trim, and of course, the cupola. Now, we had talked about doing the cupola as part of the roof, but that has been kind of an unknown for us. So this proposal does include masonry work and, you know, a lot of work on the exterior of the building that goes beyond just the roofs. And for those other items, we do not have other bids to compare it to. The idea with this proposal was to use a pre-bid service to avoid having to develop a request for proposals and the timeline to go out and seek bids. We did request another, I guess, current estimate on the roof, but weren't able to obtain one yet.
The cupola is separate from the roof?
It's embedded in this proposal.
The one that you're asking, you asked for one forty-five?
The cupola is in the Gordian proposal.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It is in this proposal.
Okay, the one that you have the letter in here for?
Yes.
Okay.
I have, you know, obviously, I have concerns, I brought those up to you earlier today. I'm not going to single that stuff out here now, but I will say that with an expenditure of this much money and the fact that it so quickly and broadly exceeds the funding that we thought we were going to have to be outlaying for replacement of the roof that we get additional bids and that we go through a you know, a little bit more formal process and maybe try to find a local contractor and there's just, like I said, there are things in here that concern me. And I think that we should not move forward on an expenditure like this without getting at least one or two more bids.
Jim, and I know we talked about this earlier, and I'm in favor of what councilman's saying here, I think we shouldn't end up going out for bids. Do you believe that the current roof, all that's going to hold up through the winter if we are going through that process? And I know we talked about it briefly, but I do want you to rate it to council if you do believe that is the case.
I think we, there have been some repairs done professionally on the roof. I don't know if the leak at the cupola has been addressed, but the the area between the two buildings where we suffered the most damage has been sealed up in a professional manner better than we could do it. The contractor that's put together this proposal did, has completed some work already to kind of patch things up for the interim.
Yeah, I just think we should go forward with a little bit more formal process.
I don't have any doubt that the work that we need to do on the roof, we need to do on the roof. I just, again, I'm just shocked at the cost. And maybe I'm just completely out of the left field, maybe I just don't know what I'm talking about, but it doesn't seem like the the proposal is specific enough in certain areas, for example, there's a cupola repairs are mentioned, but what are those repairs? Will the cupola be functional? Is the pinnacle going to be on top of the cupola? Will the bells ring? What is the, what is the You know, those are the kind of things that that, you know, it seems like we're just writing a blank check for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and whatever we can get for that amount of money, that's what we're going to get, I don't I'm not convinced that this is it's not defined enough for my satisfaction anyway. Just, it seems too general. For the amount of money we're paying.
Are there any specific questions while Gordian is on the on the screen with us?
I could go through it and maybe ask others too, but I don't know, I just, if you can, you know, maybe I just need to be reassured that Jim, you're way too low, this is the cost of things today, we've got to suck it up and go forward, well, I don't want that answer, but I I would understand it if you gave it to me, I'm not a construction expert. But it just seems like, I mean, I just can't envision two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix this roof.
If the repairs are going to hold for this amount of money, we should go for bids. That's my
Yeah, I would agree, if we have been, sir, could you mute your mic? Terrible feedback. Yeah, if we're going to you know, if we've been made stable for the time being and we can make it through the winter, now that we should be waiting any length of time, we should be, start that process, start the clock moving now on getting getting additional pricing and getting a look in on this. You know, it's like I said, to me, there's some duplication, there's, you know, some excessive costs in just some of the things that I've looked at. Without digging into the deep nuts and bolts, some of the things seem to make sense. Others don't, so you know, that's why, you know, we shouldn't, we should not move forward on this right now, absolutely not.
Other suggestions, I mean, other thoughts are, is the historical value of this building considered in the repairs that are being made? You know, we just talked about the importance of maintaining the store downtown. What credence has been given to making sure we don't lose some of that? And again, I wish I could be more specific, but it was just, there was just too many there was just too many numbers for me to digest, I guess, I don't know what it was. But it just, I didn't see anything in there that said, yeah, well, I'm signing off on this.
How long is this good for? I mean, are they gonna, is this a situation where if they send it out for bid and then we lose this one and we find out that this is how much it's going to cost, except for that now it's going to cost this much more? Because this is obviously an issue that we've been dealing with for it's been as long as I've been here. There's been issues with leaking and the air conditioning units and the cupola and so, I mean, literally, it's a project that probably should have been taken care of six or eight years ago and just never was. So, I mean, are we at that point where because we pushed it off? You know, that's where we are.
Well, there's, I mean, there's certainly no guarantee that the patch that was done will last indefinitely. You know, we can certainly hope, cross our fingers and hope that it will last through winter. You know, I mean, if we decide to wait and go out for bids or some other process, I guess, that our code may allow. You know, we may find ourselves having to do more emergency repairs, you know, if we get you know, if the patch fails or we get, you know, an area next to where it leaked that hasn't leaked yet, but it could fail you know, in the next storm, we just don't know. And I'd like to have more solid information for you. But, you know, we've known that the roof is, you know, at the end of its life cycle. And the recent leak issue has revealed that there was some work done that was not done in an ideal manner, I guess, particularly the way the buildings were joined together. And, you know, that was part of the failure, the way it was sealed up. So again, you know, I can't really provide much assurance that, you know, we're good until March or something like that.
You know, I think we, you know, if we have a month or two that it takes to get some additional bids, I think we can make it that far. I'm not saying we should wait around and dilly-dally with this, but we ought to get additional votes.
Additional questions, comments, concerns by council?
Who secured the patch job that's up there now? This company?
Yes, Dynamic General Contracting did the patch.
They give us any warranty, guarantee at all, how long it would?
I don't believe so, and I don't believe we've been invoiced either.
In other words, a couple of feet of snow on it could cave it all in again.
Probably not cave in, but yeah, certainly, snow is hard, nothing will reveal leaks like snowmelt.
My understanding is that the patch that was done is a step above the work that had been done previously that they found. So, you know, it certainly should be more solid than what we had to begin with, but we don't know what's two feet away from that.
Patching is what has gotten us to where we are today.
Right.
So the roof needs to be replaced, period.
Yeah, I don't think that that's the question.
Yeah, that's not, nobody's arguing that, I do, I think we all agree that it needs to be replaced, I think
I'm not a construction person, I don't know anything about these figures I'm looking at. But what are we going to do about it? It costs what it costs. And nothing is going down, it just keeps going up. So I'm not opposed to getting other bids, but if we don't get them by the first of the year, we have to move on this.
Can we do an expedited process?
I will work with DPW and see what we can put together, how quickly we can do that, and I'll also have a conversation with the city attorney as to any alternatives that we might be able to explore.
Okay, I think that's
Is that okay with everybody, we expedite going for bids?
Yeah, like I said, if you don't get it by the first of the year, we got to move on what we have.
Jim, would you?
I don't disagree with that, we got to have a roof.
Would you like to set a set date for the bid process or anything like that, or do you want to work all that out?
I think it's better just to work that out with DPW. Just a second here.
Thirty-one thousand dollars for front fascia. Twenty-three thousand dollars for the
Did you want anything special on that, or are you good with the answer thus far?
Consensus to move in that direction?
I will follow up with DPW and we'll have the conversation about what
Twenty-two thousand dollars to move the HVAC equipment.
And that, yeah, that part was something that we did not foresee, that we did not anticipate with our original estimate was right, we did not factor that in when we estimated for the roof cost of the hundred and fifty thousand for that part of it.
Okay, are you satisfied with that then?
Okay.
Or do you want like an official consensus?
Sounds like nobody's ready to make a motion, so.
He said he's good with what he's got.
How many bids are we going to need?
I mean, typically, if we have something that exceeds the authority for staff to approve something or for me to approve something, we try to get at least two estimates or two quotes for something. I mean, ideally, we like to have three, sometimes it's hard to get three. You know, sometimes we get, we only get two bids back when we do an RFP. So we will have to work on, you know, what is the quickest process that we can use? I know the code does allow some alternative methods, but we rarely go with those. Usually, it's more where, you know, we have a contractor who has been doing ninety-nine percent of the work on a particular facility and it just makes sense to keep using them, or there's a proprietary manufacturer that we have to stay with, you know, to cost effectively make a repair or an improvement. You know, this doesn't really fall into those kind of categories where off the top of my head, I can comfortably say, this is why it doesn't make sense to go out to bid. We'll explore that and expedite it and come back to you with something next month.
Whatever you get, if it's one, if it's two, I don't think anybody sitting here better expect this price to go, be cut in half.
And if it is, I would be worried.
Because it's not. So don't think that, you'll just feel better that you didn't go with one person, that's all.
Some people's money.
But the price is still going to be up there.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward to councilmember Port, starting with councilmember Tillman.
As the city manager said, it's been a busy month in the Planning Commission, there are a lot of traffic studies going on and a lot of projects kind of in the pipeline and some of them are reappearing and some of them are a little further down the road than they've been. I'm not going to go through the whole laundry list, I do want to take a few minutes though to talk about the fact that
minutes though to talk about the fact that most of the planning commission went to the Planning Commission Conference that took place at Turf Valley two weeks ago, and that was a great conference, there was a lot of really good information, almost the entire planning commission was in attendance, and there were a lot of really, really great sessions, and some things that kind of opened our eyes in terms of looking at how we, how we do zoning and how we administer zoning, you know, looking at things like form-based zoning, instead of just straight use-based zoning and mixed-use zonings and things that will be a little more creative and a little, you know, allow some more creative adapt, and more adaptive uses of the property here in Tawnytown, so, that, that was a, a really excellent, a really excellent conference and some really good contacts were made, and I'm looking forward to, to carrying some of that stuff forward into the comprehensive plan. We've received over four hundred responses to the comprehensive plan survey, some folks are, some of the members are disappointed we aren't seeing more, but, you know, I, I think that's about what I kind of expected, I was hoping for more like seven or eight hundred, but I'll take what we can get, because that's still at least a reasonably sized sample, and there's a, a lot of good information that will come out of that. So, we, we will be meeting again on the nineteenth for the comprehensive plan, uh, work, and then our regular, our regular commission meeting on the last Monday of the month.
Sounds good, Mayor Proton?
Uh, just a few comments on the, um, I made comments on the report, but I just wanted to point out that several of us went over to the Frederick, early in October, attended the first annual Main Street Conference Annual Meeting, and I thought that was a very well-spent, I, I don't know what I was expecting when I went over there, I got a lot out of some of the sessions and not much out of others, so I guess it's like any other meeting you go to. And, um, just glad we had the opportunity to do that, I think it was a pretty, pretty insightful meeting in many ways, in many ways, it didn't seem to pertain to us directly, but all in all, a good thing.
Councilmember Foster?
Okay, under, um, DP, for DPW, uh, under leak detection during the month of October, it's leak detection, leak detection, there were none found. The lead service line inventory that we all got has been submitted to MDE, and the next step for the city is to investigate ten percent of the lines that were not report, that were reported as unknown. The investigation will include sending out notices to residents to allow DPW into their homes to look at the water service entering the home, and also digging along the service line to confirm pipe material as well. There will also be notifications sent to residents if their lines are found to be led or galvanized, and the need to have them replaced. DPW will be applying for grant funding to help cover the cost of these line replacements at little to no cost to the city or residents. And that's all I have.
So, last month, Mayor Proton, we were speaking of the train, that refurbished
train has been installed at the park by the tennis courts over at Memorial Park, DPW did a fantastic job fixing it up, and the community has overall been very positive on this new addition. The first Halloween decorating contest concluded with our first prize going to seventy-nine Kenan Street, second went to twenty Grant Street, third went to thirty-eight Bison Street, and we have an honorable mention to seventy Kenan Street, who also won the drawing for the twenty-five gift certificate to Ambassador's Extravaganporium. All the prizes were gift cards to our local business, or from our local businesses for purchase. I want to thank all the participants. The annual photography contest has wrapped up, and the Park and Rec Advisory Board members are now reviewing all the entries to determine the prize winners. We've received over a hundred and sixty-seven photos taken in our parks throughout the year, more than any previous year. The prizes are going to include gift cards and free pavilion rentals, um, let's see what else, Tales of Tawnytown Trunk and Treat were held on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, and were of great success. We want to thank the sponsors, Thunderhead Bowl, Tawney Service Center, and Buddy's Place. Thank you to the judges and the Chamber of Commerce for a great trunk or treat, and to the volunteers who coordinated the pumpkin painting, it was a wonderful, wonderful day, very much enjoyed by the community. Our Christmas tree lighting is going to be held on Saturday, December seventh, starting at four-thirty PM with the candy cane hunt, followed by Santa's arrival at five-thirty PM. There will be food trucks on hand for hot food, warm beverages, and we'll also have glitter tattoos and wagon rides, weather permitting, and hopefully some musical performances, she's still coordinating with a few. The holiday decorating contest is going to run from December first to the thirty-first, those interested in entering should email the arena by December thirteenth, winners will receive gift cards from local businesses. Our next Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November thirteenth, immediately following the six-thirty PM Athletic Association meeting. One more point that we want to mention is that we've been experiencing an uptick in vandalism at our parks, from graffiti to flipping picnic tables. We're hoping that the police will be increasing park patrols, and the hope is that perhaps the vandals will take a break once colder wet, weather sets in, but we ask that anybody who sees suspicious activity in the parks, please call the police department. These damages from vandals are being paid for by your tax dollars, and I know that the Facebook's favorite phrase is kids will be kids. Those kids would have, would have gotten a whooping in my day, I don't know.
Not for parents to be parents.
Kids being kids, yeah, don't destroy other people's property, so, um, we would like your help to just keep an eye on the parks and, and, and watch, I think it's, like I said, I think it's been Memorial Park, the Roth Avenue Park, uh-
Where's that CHS?
Um, CHS probably had some, and I wouldn't be surprised if Robert Smill wasn't in there as well, so, we just ask that everybody keeps an eye out, please, and that is it.
Sounds good, I'll do the Tawnytown Police Department report since councilmember Chaney is not here. We had a total dispatcher generated calls for service at five-hundred-and-twenty-five, total citation, citations issued forty-one, total warnings issued one-hundred-and-eighty-one, total adult arrests twelve, total juvenile arrests three. On October ninth, Ms. Ingles participated in a car seat inspection event that was held at the Tawnytown Library, approximately fourteen car seat inspections were completed. On October nineteenth, Ms. Ingles participated in What Is Love event that was put on by Supreme Board Community Services in Westminster. We also had in-service training, tire deflation device stopstick, two hours, dealing with armed suspects, one hour, all officers, specialized training, Corporal Marshall completed first-line supervisor training. Wow, why is my brain drawing a blank? Um, oh, sorry. Officer Blaze completed adult and pediatric first aid CPR AED training on October ninth, twenty-four. Officer Blaze completed adult and pediatric first aid CPR and AED training on October twenty-third, twenty-four. Corporal Schaefer attended the Leadership Speaker Series, It's Your Ship, on October ninth, twenty-ninth, twenty-four. Also wanted to say Bike Patrol has been outstandingly received by the community, people are loving it, it saw some work on Halloween, same theme, glow sticks always greatly appreciated, had a lot of positive feedback on that. Other than that, I am looking for a, uh, motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Looking for a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.